Greetings, Father Mark signing on, continuing the series on the history of the Catholic Church in the United States. Moving through the twentieth century into the post-World War II years in the Eisenhower presidency. Brings us to a transitional moment in American history. That connects back to the way we started this whole series was slavery and its role. And then continued in the Civil War, post-Civil War period with Jim Crow. And that began to be reversed during Eisenhower's reign. And which brings us to the Supreme Court decision Brown versus the Board of Education of Topeka, Kansas. It was first argued before the court in December nineteen fifty-two. And it was reargued, but it was the final decision was May seventeenth nineteen fifty-four. So fifty-four is that's why they've been going on for years, but the date is always that when the final decision is made. So to review where the situation in nineteen fifty-four came from. We refresh our memories with the founding document of the country, the Declaration of Independence. July fourth seventeen seventy-six, paragraph two begins. "We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness." Now recall when we covered the Constitution, I mean the Declaration, the very next sentence was this. So this sentence stipulates or acknowledges in the founding document that there is a Creator, that that Creator made all of us equal. And specified at least three categories of rights, life, liberty, pursuit of happiness. As rooted in our nature, created by God, yet, yet, the very next sentence. "That to secure these rights, governments are instituted among men, deriving their just power from the consent of the governed." End quote. So the very next sentence essentially nullifies the first sent, the previous sentence. So the previous sentence Creator made us all equal, life, liberty, pursuit of happiness, these are unalienable rights. Yet the very next sentence. Governments from the consent of the governed. So it's not based in divine law. It's based on the consent of the governed and even, we can be even more specific. That subset of the governed who in a particular time and place have the ability to control the government, to make policy. Alright. Seventeen eighty-seven, July thirteenth, the Northwest Ordinance. Okay, the, so the, the American Revolution ended successfully in seventeen eighty-three. The territory northwest of the Ohio River was part of our conquest. You know, we won that, you know, because Great Britain had claimed that since the end of the French and Indian War. And we defeated Great Britain, so we got that territory. However, that territory northwest of the Ohio River had not been organized into colonies. So the thirteen colonies of Great Britain that came together to form the first thirteen states had this extra territory northwest of the Ohio River that had not yet been organized. So what do you do with it? Well, that's where this Northwest Ordinance came from. Now notice the date seventeen eighty-seven, this was still the Articles of Confederation government. The Constitution was not ratified till the following year. So the Northwest Territory was, was, the Northwest Ordinance created the Northwest Territory. By the Congress of the Articles of Confederation. This was the nation's first post-colonial organized incorporated territory. So it, you know, it had a recognition under the Articles of Confederation government, but was not yet organized into states. At the time of its creation, the Northwest Territory included all the land west of Pennsylvania, northwest of the Ohio River, but only on the eastern, up to the, you know, on the eastern side of the Mississippi River, below the Great Lakes. So from, from the western border of Pennsylvania to the Mississippi, then from the Great Lakes to the Ohio River. It spanned all apart of what eventually became another six United US states. Ohio, Indiana, Illinois, Michigan, Wisconsin, and parts, the northeastern part of Minnesota. The, the first carved out of that, southeast, what southeastern Indiana was carved out and identified or reclassified as Indiana Territory on July fourth eighteen hundred. And the Northwest Territory ceased to exist on March first eighteen oh three, when the southeastern portion was admitted to the Union as the state of Ohio. And the remainder of what had been the Northwest Territory became the Indiana Territory. Until, and the other states I mentioned would be carved out of that. Initially, the Northwest Territory was governed by martial law, you know, by the army, under a governor and three judges. As the population increased, a legislature was formed, as were a succession of counties, eventually totaling thirteen. At the time of its creation, the Northwest Territory was essentially wilderness, long populated by indigenous tribes, including the Delaware, the Miami, the Potawatomi, the Shawnee, and others. And there were also the descendants, I mean, there were Europe, well, the descendants of Europeans there from the French, because that had been the Louisiana Territory, which for a time had been connected to Canada when all of it was a French colony. So they had the descendants of, you know, there were French colonists, the French Canadian colonists. By the time of the Territory's dissolution into states, there were dozens of towns settlements, some with up to several thousand settlers along the Ohio, the Miami rivers, and on the southern shore of Lake Erie in Ohio. Conflicts between settlers and Native American inhabitants resulted in a war, the Northwest Indian War, which culminated with the General Anthony Wayne's victory, meaning the American victory over the Indians, at the Battle of Fallen Timbers in seventeen ninety-four. The subsequent treaty with the, with the tribes that had been resisting American encroachment was the Treaty of Greenville in seventeen ninety-five, which opened the way for an exponential increase in settlement along the southern, the southern reaches, meaning on the, the Ohio River toward the Mississippi River where they intersect. I mentioned this now because the wording of the Northwest Ordinance from seventeen eighty-seven prohibited, forbade slavery in the Territory. And yet, the very next year, June twenty-first seventeen eighty-eight, the US Constitution was finally ratified, which with regard to slavery included four provisions that either directly pertain to slavery, well, I should say, the word slavery does not, does not appear in the Constitution. However, there are four items in the Constitution that, that, that were applied to slavery. Article one, section two. Quote, "Representatives and direct taxes shall be apportioned among the several states which may be included within this Union according to their respective numbers, which shall be determined by adding to the whole number of free persons, including those bound to service for a term of years, and excluding Indians not taxed, three-fifths of all other persons." So those bound to service for a term of years, that's either indentured servants or prisoners. Excluding Indians, of course, that's the indigenous people, three-fifths of all other persons. So they don't, they don't call them slaves, but the only ones left. Since the indigenous people are mentioned and, you know, so the only ones left are the, are the slaves. So they would be enumerated as three-fifths of a person in calculating the population of a state to determine how many representatives the state would have in the, in the lower house, the House of Representatives in Congress. Article one, section nine. The migration or importation of such persons as any of the states now existing shall think proper to admit, shall not be prohibited by the Congress prior to the year one thousand eight hundred and eight. But a tax or duty may be imposed on such importation, not exceeding ten dollars for each person. Okay, so again, the word slavery is not mentioned. However, so the migration of persons, that, that could be anybody, but importation. Alright, so that's, that's even though the word slavery is not mentioned. You know, it is, it is acknowledged that Congress may not interfere with that prior to the year eighteen oh eight. And of course, they'll be taxed. On January first eighteen oh eight, a bill that passed in Congress under Thomas, in eighteen oh seven, was signed by Thomas Jefferson on January first eighteen oh eight. That, that followed this, that Congress could not interfere with the slave trade, which is what this is, prior to the year eighteen oh eight. So from that point on, presumably, the, the slave population would be replenished through, you know, organic means. Just, you know, that they would, I mean, they're humans, so they're gonna have children. Article one, section eight. Quote, "To provide for calling forth the militia to execute the laws of the Union, suppress insurrections, and repel invasions." Unquote, now that's just a representative quote. So that, this is one of the enumerated powers, that the Constitution lists eighteen powers for the federal government, and this is one of them, to call forth of the militia to execute laws, suppress insurrections, and repel invasions. So the militia is the ancestor of our National Guard. Once again, slaves were not mentioned. However, if there were a slave insurrection, then the government could call forth the militia to suppress it. And lest one think that that is just a, you know, that's a loose interpretation. Article four, section two is more specific, which reads in part. "No person held to service or labor in one state under the laws thereof escaping into another shall in consequence of any law or regulation therein," meaning the new state, "be discharged from such service or labor, but shall be delivered up on claim of the party to whom such service or labor may be due." So this is the fugitive slave clause. Now, of course, it would also apply to prisoners, you know, and anyone convicted of a crime in one state who escaped, that they were not actually escaping, that the government was, so this is extradition, you know. If they were captured in another state, they'd be extradited back to the original state. But it also applied to slaves, even though again, the word slavery is not mentioned. Okay, so that's seventeen eighty-eight. Eighteen oh three, April thirtieth, the date that the Louisiana Purchase took effect. The Louisiana Purchase Treaty was signed on that date at the Hotel Tabouf in Paris. The signers representing the United States were, who would purchase the territory from France, were Robert Livingston, James Monroe, future president, and Francois Barbey Marbois. The treaty was announced to the public on July fourth eighteen oh three, with the physical document arriving in Washington DC on July fourteenth eighteen oh three. The terms of the treaty provided for acquisition of the territory of French Louisiana by the United States from the first French Republic. In return for fifteen million dollars, approximately eighteen dollars per square mile, the United States acquired eight hundred and twenty-eight thousand square miles in middle, what turned out to be middle America. The Louisiana Purchase extended US sovereignty across the Mississippi River and doubling in terms of square miles, doubling the size of the country. The Louisiana Purchase included land that would eventually be organized into fifteen US states. And also included some territory that, you know, that were part of two Canadian provinces. So carved from the Louisiana Territory would eventually be the entirety of the states of Arkansas, Missouri, Iowa, Oklahoma, Kansas, Nebraska, North Dakota, South Dakota, Montana, Wyoming, Colorado, east of the Continental Divide, and part, part of Minnesota west of the Mississippi River, the northeastern part of what became New Mexico, the northern portions of Texas, and of course Louisiana. New Orleans, the port of New Orleans, and the portions of the present state of Louisiana west of the Mississippi, and small portions of land within what had the Canadian provinces of Alberta and Saskatchewan. At the time of the purchase, the territory of Louisiana's non-native population, meaning not, not, not indigenous, not descended from the indigenous people, was around sixty thousand inhabitants. Of those, about half were slaves, either from Africa or descended from Africans. The western border of the Purchase was later settled in eighteen nineteen by the Adams-Oni Treaty with Spain. While the northern border of the Purchase was adjusted by the Treaty of eighteen eighteen with Great Britain. Alright, so one of those states, one, one state carved out of that territory was Missouri, which is why I mention in this now, because it's significant to the development of slavery. So Missouri, Missouri becoming a state required a compromise, the Missouri Compromise on March sixth eighteen twenty. So Article six, section three, clause one of the Constitution grants Congress the authority to admit new states to the Union. Since the establishment of the United States in seventeen seventy-six, the number of states expanded from the original thirteen, well, now up to fifty. So on April thirtieth eighteen twelve, the southernmost fifty-two thousand square miles of the Louisiana Purchase, including the port city of New Orleans, were carved out and accepted into the Union as state number eighteen, the state of Louisiana. The upper portion of the original Louisiana Purchase was initially referred to as Upper Louisiana or Northern Louisiana, but after Louisiana Statehood was re-designated as the Missouri Territory. The non-indigenous population grew to sixty-seven thousand in eighteen twenty. Of those, now that's just in what became the state of Missouri. Of those within the borders of what became Missouri, ten thousand were slaves, so ten thousand out of the sixty-seven thousand. The Missouri Statehood Bill opened for debate in the House of Representatives on February thirteenth eighteen nineteen. A representative from the state of New York named John, excuse me, James, James Talmadge Junior introduced a provision, an amendment to the Statehood Bill that would have forbidden slavery in the new state of Missouri. The significance of this is to be found in the then enumeration of the states of the Union. Slavery existed in eleven states. Slavery did not exist in another eleven states, so evenly divided, eleven-eleven. Therefore, the slave status or free status of any new state could give a numerical advantage to abolitionist like Talmadge, who would then use the numerical advantage in the legislature to legislate slavery out of existence. That was the fear of southern slave owners. And, and that, that was, I mean, Talmadge was, you know, he wasn't hunting anything, he was an abolitionist. I mean, he did believe slavery should, you know, should no longer exist. On February sixteenth eighteen nineteen, the House Committee of the Whole voted to link Talmadge's provision with the Missouri Statehood Legislation. That vote passed seventy-nine to sixty-seven. The debates in the House's second session in eighteen nineteen lasted only three days. Representatives from northern states outnumbered those from the south in House membership, one oh five to eighty-one. When each of the restrictionist provisions was put to a vote, they passed, meaning limiting slavery. And they passed strictly on sectional lines, north versus south, eighty-seven to seventy-six for prohibition on further slave migration into Missouri, and eighty-two to seventy-eight for emancipating the children of slaves at the age of twenty-five. The enabling bill passed the House and then went to the Senate. Now, population mattered in the House, because the larger the population of a state, the more representatives it had. But in the Senate, every state, no matter the population, had two senators each. The logic being that the House of Representatives represented the populations, whereas the Senate represented the states. So the state, the senators were like the ambassadors of the states to, to the, to the nation's capital. Now they are, the numerical, the larger population of the north didn't matter. So both of those, both parts of those amendments were rejected in the Senate. You know, meaning rejecting any restrictions on slavery. Because, so what, okay, so that, that would have killed it. I mean, so, you know, Missouri, there would be no, Missouri Statehood would have just been sabotaged and it would have just remained a territory. Until a portion of Massachusetts was called, was the District of Maine. And it, it had developed in such a way that it no longer wished to be part of the state of Massachusetts. So the District of Maine petitioned for state, for statehood, to be admitted as a separate state of the Union. Now Maine never had slaves, because, you know, it's, it's, it was in the north and, and the topography does not lend itself to plantation, you know, economy, so they didn't have slaves. So this suggested a way to, to, you know, a compromise. So that both areas that wanted to be states could become states, but the numerical balance would remain. So instead of eleven-eleven, it would be, you know, twelve-twelve. If one of them was admitted as a free state and the other was admitted as a slave state. So that's what happened. The Senate decided to connect the two measures, statehood for Missouri and statehood for Maine. The Senate passed a bill for the admission of Maine as a free state with an amendment enabling the people of Missouri to form a state constitution. Before the bill was returned to the House, a second amendment was adopted on the motion of Jesse B. Thomas of Illinois to exclude slavery from the Louisiana Territory, not just Missouri, north of the latitude thirty-six degrees thirty north of the equator, which would be the southern border of Missouri, except it would permit slavery within the proposed state of Missouri, but otherwise, all the territory north of that line, thirty-six thirty, would not have slavery, no matter how many states were carved out of it. So the vote in the Senate was twenty-four twenty in favor of the compromise. The, that amendment and the bill for Missouri and Maine Statehood passed in the Senate on February seventeenth and February eighteenth eighteen twenty. The House then approved the Senate Compromise Amendment ninety to eighty-seven, with all of the opposition coming from representatives from northern states, free states. The House then approved the whole bill, one thirty-four to forty-two, with opposition, some opposition from southern states. So the measure was signed into law by President James Monroe on March sixth eighteen twenty. So this is the Missouri Compromise. It prohibited slavery, it allowed slavery in Missouri, but otherwise prohibited slavery in the area north of the parallel thirty-six degrees thirty north. So any new states admitted north of that line would be free. But also, relatively, any, any states organized from territory south of that line, slavery would be, would be legal to maintain the balance. The legal effects, though, one thing not considered, what would happen if a slave owner from, from, you know, from a slave state traveled north of the line with his slave? Would the slave then automatically be free? How would that be reconciled with the fugitive slave provision that I read earlier in the Constitution? So that remained ambiguous until a later Supreme Court decision, Dred Scott versus Sanford, which we'll talk about next, but just seminary, and so you have it officially. Maine was admitted as the twenty-third state of the Union on March fifteenth eighteen twenty. Missouri was admitted as the twenty-fourth state of the Union on August tenth eighteen twenty-one. Okay, time passed. The Dred Scott versus Sanford decision, the Supreme Court case. It was argued first in February of eighteen fifty-six. It was reargued in December of the same year, and the decision was rendered on March sixth eighteen fifty-seven. So the full name of the case was Dred Scott versus John F. A. Sanford. Now, John Sanford's surname was actually Sanford, S-A-N-F-O-R-D. A Supreme Court clerk misspelled his name in eighteen fifty-six and the error was never corrected. So Dred Scott was, was a person. He was a, born in, in Virginia, he was born a slave in Virginia around seventeen ninety-nine. His first owner was a guy named Peter Blow, B-L-O-W. Peter Blow moved to Alabama in eighteen eighteen, taking his six slaves along with him, including Dred Scott, to work a farm near Huntsville, Alabama. In eighteen thirty, Blow, Peter Blow, gave up farming and settled in St. Louis, Missouri, which was a slave state, brought his slaves with him, and he sold Dred Scott to a US Army surgeon, Dr. John Emerson. After purchasing Dred Scott, Dr. Emerson took him to Fort Armstrong, Illinois, which is on the northern side of the Missouri Compromise line, so it would be a free state. Not would be, it was a free state. Illinois became a state in eighteen nineteen. And now, that, so it was already, it would have been free anyway because Illinois was carved out of the Northwest Territory. And according to the Northwest Ordinance of seventeen eighty-seven, written before the Constitution, came into effect, the Northwest Territory was free. So according to those terms, Illinois was free, but also according to the Missouri Compromise, it was north of the line, so it would automatically be free. So did that mean Dred Scott was automatically free? Well. Now Scott, at that point, did not pursue it. But it's an interesting question in light of what later happened. In eighteen thirty-six, Emerson was transferred, Dr. Emerson, he was still an army surgeon, so they moved him around. So he, he was transferred from Illinois to Wisconsin, he served at Fort Snelling. He brought Dred Scott with him, Wisconsin also, you know, that was free, it was free territory, it was north of the line. During his stay in Fort Snelling, Dred Scott married Harriet Robinson, another slave, in a civil ceremony conducted by Harriet's owner, who was, was in the army, is a major, Major Lawrence Taliaferro. He was also a justice of the peace and he was also an Indian agent, you know, dealing, so a government aide, well, the army did that, so that was. Now, the ceremony would have been unnecessary had Dred Scott been a slave, as slave marriages had no recognition in the law. So why do this? Well, we don't know. I mean, there was no, no documents surviving, you know, explaining why it was done. In eighteen thirty-seven, Dr. Emerson, still in the army, was transferred again, this time to Jefferson Barracks, south of St. Louis, so he's to Missouri. So now he's brought Dred Scott to Illinois, which was one free area to Wisconsin, which was not yet a state, but it was, you know, it was territory north of the line, but then brings him back to a slave state, Missouri, St. Louis, Missouri. brings him back to a slave state, Missouri, St. Louis, Missouri. But Emerson left Dred Scott with his wife, with, with Dred Scott's wife Harriet at Fort Snelling, but he did not rec- recognize their freedom. Instead, he leased their services out for profit to people who did not have slaves, you know, then they would pay him for their services. By hiring Dred Scott out in a free state, Dr. Emerson was effectively bringing the institution of slavery into a free state, which was a direct violation of the Missouri Compromise, the Northwest Ordinance. Before the end of the year, the Army reassigned Emerson again to Fort Jessup in Louisiana, a slave state. There, Dr. Emerson got married. He married a lady named, lady named Eliza Irene Sanford in February eighteen thirty-eight. Emerson then sent, ordered Scott, Dred Scott and Harriet to come to Louisiana to serve him and his wife. But within months, Emerson was transferred back to Fort Snelling. So while en route back to Fort Snelling, Dred Scott's had a, a daughter, who, just to confuse things, was named Eliza. So Emerson's wife and therefore owner was Eliza, and now Dred Scott's daughter is also named Eliza. She was born on a steamboat, which was traveling down the Mississippi River between Illinois and what would become Iowa, at that, that part of the river when she was born. That's still north of the line. That's north of the Missouri Compromise line. So even though, you know, in southern states, the children of slaves, slaves get birthed to slaves, but even though, you know, okay, so are they slaves? But she's born on the northern side of the Missouri Compromise line, so does that mean that's free territory? So technically, she was born a free person, under both federal and state laws. But upon entering Louisiana, the Scots could have sued for her freedom, but at the, at the time, they did not. Toward the end of eighteen thirty-eight, the Army re, so Emerson was assigned back to Fort Snelling. By eighteen forty, Emerson's wife, Eliza Irene, but just to avoid the confusion, we'll just call her Irene from this point on, Emerson's wife Irene returned to St. Louis with their slaves from Louisiana and Missouri, but those are both still slave states, while Dr. Emerson served, you know, he served in, in the, in the Indian Wars. While in St. Louis, a slave state, his wife Irene hired them out, so still her slaves and she's getting the profit from, from their labor. But that's a slave state. Now, now, they, because they didn't own a plantation, so it's, it's, that's a slave state. All right, time passed. Eighteen forty-two, Emerson retired from the Army, and he eventually died the following year in the Iowa Territory, leaving Irene his widow to inherit his estate, which included Dred Scott and his other slaves. For three years after Emerson's death, Irene continued to rent out the services of the Scots and, you know, like people would pay her for their labor. Until eighteen forty-six, Dred Scott finally attempted to purchase his freedom and his family's freedom. So interesting, he, at this point, he was not trying to use any legal arguments that they had been freed when they went north of the line. At this point, it was just straight purchase, which was a thing in southern states. I mean, you, you know, slaves could purchase their freedom. But Irene Emerson refused. You know, she did, she didn't, even, even in exchange for money, for buying, buying the freedom, she refused because she was living off of their work. Now, even though she didn't own a plantation, they weren't working a plantation for her, she was renting out their services to people to do, you know, whatever labor, and that's which, that was her regular income. So if she let Dred Scott give her a one-time payment, eventually, you know, she'd spend through that, just, just living, paying, paying to live, but she wanted them, it would be like an annuity to keep them, so they're working for, you know, the rest of her life, supporting her. And that, that's, that's, that's when Dred Scott finally pursued legal recourse. And he, he found, found legal help from abolitionists. Now, that's the only way this, this Dred Scott case, you know, pursues. Obviously, he didn't have the financial resources to do it because she was taking all the money that he earned. So he sued Emerson, Irene Emerson, for his freedom in the Circuit Court of St. Louis County on April sixth, eighteen forty-six. So that's the, that, that begins the timeline of how this, you know, became, went to the Supreme Court from eighteen forty-six, you know, on. A separate petition was filed for his wife Harriet, making them the first married couple to file suit to gain their freedom in tandem. And they received financial assistance, ironically, from the family of Dred Scott's previous owner, Peter Blow. Peter was dead already, but, you know, the, the, the family, it was actually his daughter, Peter, Peter's daughter Charlotte, had married a guy named Joseph Charles. Joseph Charles was a senior officer in the Bank of Missouri, even though Peter Blow was from Virginia, so it's, I mean, it's, it's, there's a lot of coincidences and you know how this thing happened. Anyway, so Joseph Charles signed legal documents as security for the Scots to, to pay, you know, their legal fees. Initially, the first, first was the bank's lawyer, Samuel Mansfield Bay, and then later there'd be a series of other lawyers. So the case of Dred Scott versus Irene Emerson Sanford, finally, no, Irene Sanford Emerson, finally went to trial on June thirtieth, eighteen forty-seven, and Scott lost. The court ordered that Dred Scott would remain, the slave of Irene Sanford Emerson. They, the lawyers, you know, helping Scott appealed to the State Supreme Court, and the State Supreme Court just dismissed the appeal on June thirtieth, eighteen forty-eight. Well, there's another appeal, but there was a fire in St. Louis in eighteen forty-nine, followed by a cholera epidemic, so two continuances delayed the trial until January twelfth, eighteen fifty. Irene had retained new, new counsel, Hugh Garland and Lyman Norris, while Dred Scott was represented by two guys named Field and Hall. The presiding judge was Judge Alexander Hamilton. The proceedings unfolded just like the first trial, and the jury quickly returned a verdict, this time in favor of Dred Scott, which, I mean, at, at, at least in the, of course, that would be appealed too, but at least, this was the first time that a legal process recognized Dred Scott as free. And Judge Hamilton declared Harriet, his wife, Dred Scott, his wife Harriet, their daughter Eliza, and another daughter Lizzie to be free. Garland then moved, one of Irene's lawyers, then moved for a new trial. He was overruled. On February thirteenth, eighteen fifty, Irene's defense filed a bill of exceptions, which was certified by Judge Hamilton, setting in motion another appeal, this time to the Missouri Supreme Court. Meanwhile, Irene left St. Louis, Missouri, and moved to Springfield, Massachusetts, which is a free state. Her brother, John F. A. Sanford, remember her maiden name was Sanford, continued looking after her business interest when, when she left, which, which meant, you know, continuing to, to pursue the legal fight to retain the slaves as her property. So her departure to a free state had no impact on the case, you know, of how it eventually made it to the Supreme Court. So a second appeal to the State Supreme Court, both, both parties filed briefs on March eighth, eighteen fifty. The docket was, was very busy, so it was delayed until the fall, the fall term. By then, the issue of slavery had become politically charged as a national issue, you know, throughout the decade of the eighteen fifties, you know, it was leading up to the Civil War, which began in eighteen sixty-one. On March twenty-second, eighteen fifty-two, a judge, the, the, the ranking judge in the Missouri State Supreme Court, who, just to confuse things, his last name is also Scott. This is Judge William Scott. He announced the decision of the Missouri Supreme Court that Dred Scott remain a slave. So he reversed, well, not just him, I mean, the, the State Supreme Court, sitting on bunk, reversed the decision of, of the, from the previous trial. The majority opinion, which was written by Judge William Scott, focused on the issue of states' rights, that, you know, regardless of where Dred Scott had traveled, at that mo, at that time, he was physically in Missouri, in the state of Missouri, which was a slave state. In eighteen fifty-three, Dred Scott again sued his current owner, John Sanford, by this time, this time in federal court. John Sanford had returned to New York in the federal courts, anyway, so it was, it got into the federal system. In addition to the existing issues, Dred Scott alleged that Sanford had assaulted his family and held them captive. So at trial in eighteen fifty-four, Judge Robert William Wells directed the jury to rely on Missouri law, even though this is a federal trial, he told them to follow Missouri law on the question of Dred Scott's freedom. Since the Missouri Supreme Court had finally held that Dred Scott remain a slave, a jury followed that and, you know, found in favor of Sanford, meaning that Dred Scott would remain Sanford's slave. Dred Scott then appealed to the U.S. Supreme Court, where the clerk misspelled Sanford's name, and the case was recorded as Dred Scott versus Sandford, with an ever erroneous title. On March sixth, eighteen fifty-seven, the U.S. Supreme Court ruled against Dred Scott in a seven-to-two decision. The decision was two-hundred pages long. The decision contains opinions from all nine justices, which is why it's so long, but the majority opinion, written by the Chief Justice Roger Taney, of, is the one that, you know, that everyone refers to. So seven justices, four in the majority, and Taney, in his opinion, began with what he saw as the core issue of the case, whether or not slaves or, you know, or could possess federal citizenship under the U.S. Constitution. In answer, the court ruled that they could not. It held that black people could not be American citizens, and therefore, a lawsuit to which they were party could never qualify for the, for the citizenship that Article Three of the Constitution requires for American federal courts to have jurisdiction over cases that do not involve a specific federal law. So the primary rationale for the court's ruling was Taney's assertion that, that black African slaves and their descendants were never intended to be part of the American social and political citizenry. The, the opinion held that the Missouri Compromise was therefore unconstitutional, because the Missouri Compromise, you know, outlawed slavery north of the line. Taney said even, even that's unconstitutional, that, that, that no one had the authority to ban slavery anywhere. This was the first time since the eighteen oh-three case of Marbury versus Madison, that the Supreme Court struck down a federal law, because the Missouri Compromise was, was technically a federal law. Taney made this argument on a strict construction, a narrow reading of the property clause of section three, of Article Four, Section Three of the Constitution, which reads, "The Congress shall have power to dispose of and make all needful rules and regulations respecting the territory or other property belonging to the United States." A decision of the, the, end quote. So a decision of the Supreme Court held that the, that the Constitution was not meant to include American citizenship for people of black African descent, regardless of whether they were enslaved or free. And so the rights and privileges that the Constitution conferred on American citizens could never apply to them. It's a sweeping decision, and that remained, you know, the, the law. So the Civil War happened. After the Civil War, the Thirteenth Amendment, December sixth, eighteen sixty-five, finally ended slavery, ended legalized slavery, except for, for prisoners. So it reads, Section One, "Neither slavery nor involuntary servitude, except as a punishment for crime, whereof the party shall have been duly convicted, shall exist within the United States or any place subject to their jurisdiction." So that dealt with the territory issue also. The Thirteenth Amendment passed the Senate on April eighth, eighteen sixty-four, passed the House on January thirty-first, eighteen sixty-five, then it has to be ratified by three-fourth of the state legislatures. So that was, so twenty-seven, the third, with thirty-six states, so twenty-seven out of the thirty-six states, and the last of them ratified it on December sixth, eighteen sixty-five, and all of that was proclaimed on December eighteenth. It was the first of the three Reconstruction Amendments adopted following the American Civil War. The following year, a law, not an amendment, the Civil Rights Act of April ninth, eighteen sixty-six. This was the first U.S. federal law to define citizenship and affirm that all citizens are equally protected by the law. It was written to protect civil rights of persons of African descent born in or brought to the United States, to correct the, the Dred Scott decision. So the Thirteenth Amendment outlawed slavery, but the citizenship, because the Dred Scott decision said those of African descent can never be citizens, whether they're slave or free. So the Civil Rights Act was correcting, you know, correcting that legislatively. It was introduced in the Senate by a Republican from Illinois named Lyman Trumbull, passed the Senate February twelfth, eighteen sixty-six, passed the House March thirteenth, eighteen sixty-six. It was vetoed by the president at the time, Andrew Johnson, on May twenty-seventh, eighteen sixty-six, but they, the Congress overrode the veto. They had enough, they had, they had the two-thirds votes to override the veto on April sixth, eighteen sixty-six, making it law on that same day. Two years later, the Fourteenth Amendment, July ninth, eighteen sixty-eight, read, Section One, quote, "All persons born or naturalized in the United States and subject to the jurisdiction thereof are citizens of the United States and of the state wherein they reside. No state shall make or enforce any law which shall abridge the privileges or immunities of citizens of the United States, nor shall any state deprive any person of life, liberty or property without due process of law, nor deny to any person within its jurisdiction the equal protection of the laws." End quote. So this is writing into the fundamental law of, of the land, the Constitution, what the Civil Rights Act of eighteen sixty-six had done. So get it, it's solving at the constitutional level the citizenship problem introduced by the ruling in the Dred Scott decision. It addressed citizenship rights, equal protection of the law, and applied the Fifth Amendment restrictions on the federal government to states. The amendment was contested particularly by states of the, the defeated Confederacy, but the, you know, the federal Congress required them to ratify it, the state legislators, slatures to ratify it in order to regain their representation in Congress. That amendment created the basis for the historic, for the Brown versus the Board decision, which is why I'm talking about, so we're leading up to Brown versus the Board regarding racial segregation. And it also was used in the Roe v. Wade case, was also used in the Bush versus Gore case for the two thousand election, and was also used in the Obergefell versus Hodges decision regarding same-sex marriage in two thousand fifteen. As the amendment limits the actions of all states and local officials, just as the Fifth Amendment limits that of the federal government. Okay. Fifteenth Amendment, February third, eighteen seventy, quote, "The rights, the right of citizens of the United States to vote shall not be denied or abridged by the United States or by any state on account of race, color, or previous condition of servitude." So, you know, it had to stipulate, it's because it wasn't, because Dred Scott had said that it wasn't just slaves, black slaves. It's because it wasn't, because Dred Scott had said that it wasn't just slaves, black slaves that that did not have citizenship. Said any descendant, whether slave or free, so that's why these, you know. It's itemized, so to speak, race, color, or previous condition of servitude. The vote in the House was one forty-four to forty-four with thirty-five abstaining. The final vote in the Senate, thirty-nine to thirteen with fourteen abstaining. Following congressional approval, the amendment was, as the procedure is, Secretary of State then sends it to the states for ratification or not. Nevada was the first state to ratify it on March first eighteen sixty-nine. On, in February of eighteen seventy, Georgia, Iowa, Nebraska, Texas, all ratified it within that same month. And that brought the total of states to twenty-nine, which is one more than was needed for ratification. And so it was finally ratified on February third eighteen seventy. In retrospect, that was the third and the last of the Reconstruction Amendments. So another Supreme Court case. Leading up to Brown versus the Board, and this is the one that Brown versus the Board is going to reverse. So May eighteenth eighteen ninety-six, Plessy versus Ferguson. Argued April thirteenth, decided May eighteenth eighteen sixty, eighteen ninety-six. All right, the background. Eighteen ninety, Louisiana, yes, the state here. The Louisiana State Legislature passed a law called the Separate Car Act. Which required separate accommodations for blacks and whites on Louisiana railroads. So now, you know, slavery, slavery doesn't exist legally, except for prisoners. So this is, this is part of the Jim Crow, you know, the apartheid regime where there where there would be legalized. Separation in public spaces between whites and blacks. So that that's, that's the background of this. This Separate Car Act required passenger trains. Uh, pa- uh, to assign each passenger to the coach or compartment used for the race. To which such passenger belongs. It also made it a misdemeanor, a crime for any passenger to insist. On going into a coach or compartment to which his or her race did not belong. Violation of that law was punishable by either a twenty-five dollar fine or up to twenty days in prison. In eighteen ninety-one. A, a, a group of activists in New Orleans, in New Orleans. Set up a Citizens Committee. Is what, just what they called it, led by, organized initially by a guy named Louis Martinet. And it was an activist group, I mean, so they they wanted to test this, they wanted to fight it in the way they, you know, to test it. Test the Separate Car Act and, you know, figuring they would lose at the local level, but then they would appeal it up, you know, so a test case. The first case, the committee decided. Was a guy named Daniel Dedunes, D E S, D U N E S. He was a son of one of the co-founders of the Citizen Committee. Rodolph, Rodolph Dedune. In eighteen ninety-two. He deliberately set out to break the law, knowing he would be arrested, but then they'd have their test case. So on February twenty-fourth, Daniel Dedune brought, bought a first-class ticket. Which means the white, you know, would have been the white area of the train. And and he sat in the, you know, in in a car on the Louisiana and Nashville Railroad. Designated for whites. And it was traveling from Nashville, traveling from, it's Louisiana Nashville Railroad. But his ticket was traveling from New Orleans, Louisiana to Montgomery, Alabama. Crossing state lines, which was another intent specifically chosen. Because interstate, you know, would mean federal, eventually they could get into the federal system. Now Dedune's case never went to trial because, well, it never went to the Supreme Court. Because the Louisiana Supreme Court ruled on May twenty-fifth eighteen ninety-two. That the Separate Car Act did not apply to interstate passengers. So that would not give him their test case, so they had to try again. The second attempt. Was by Homer Plessy. Homer Plessy, New Orleans native, a Catholic, and those of you locals, he he grew up in St. Augustine Parish. Which is where Ariat, Ariat de Los Parish. He was, and I know this is offensive, but just it it won't, it won't make sense without understanding this. Homer Plessy was classified according to the racial stratification of the day as an Octoroon. You know, so he was mixed blood, but he did have African blood, so he, but one eighth, you know. But that would still put him on the, on the. Under Louisiana law, the Separate Car Act, he would still be considered black and therefore bound to sit in the, you know, or forbidden to sit in the white car. So on June seventh eighteen ninety-two, Homer Plessy bought a first-class ticket at the Press Street Depot. And boarded the whites-only car of the East Louisiana Railroad in New Orleans. It was bound for Covington, Louisiana. For those of you not local, that's just, that's across Lake Pontchartrain on the North Shore. The Railroad Company, which ironically had opposed the Separate Car Act, Separate Car Act, because it would have required them to purchase more. Railroad cars, had been previously informed. Of Homer Plessy's racial lineage. And the intent to challenge the law. So the Railroad Company was in on this. You know, that, because it cost them more money to have more, you know, more more railroad cars. Additionally, the Citizens Committee hired a private detective to detain Plessy. And to just said, turn him in, you know, just in case nobody noticed, so they really, they wanted this test case. So Plessy took a seat in the whites-only railway car. They went through the, you know, the, the, since the railroad was in on it, they went through the charade, so it would be witnessed, they asked him to remove, to remove himself. And sit in the blacks-only car, he refused, and then as was planned, he was arrested. While he was detained by the detective and the detective turned him in. As planned, the train was stopped and Plessy was taken off the train at the Press and Royal Street stop. And he was, he was arrested and remanded for trial in Orleans Parish. Plessy petitioned the State District Criminal Court to throw out the case, the State versus Homer Adolf Plessy. On the grounds that the state law requiring the railroad to segregate trains had denied him his rights. Under the federal, under federal law, the constitutional law, the Thirteenth and Fourteenth Amendments of the Constitution. And remember, the Fourteenth was specifically relating to citizenship and stipulated that states could not deprive a citizenship of rights. Of, under the equal protection clause. But the judge presiding over the case was John Howard Ferguson. He ruled that the state of Louisiana had the right to regulate railroad companies. While they operated within state boundaries. Four days later, so he lost, Plessy lost, so four days later, Plessy. Backed by the Citizens Committee, petitioned the Louisiana Supreme Court for a writ of prohibition to stop the criminal trial. The Louisiana Supreme Court issued a temporary writ of prohibition. So Plessy didn't have to, was not incarcerated, while it reviewed the case. In December of eighteen ninety-two, the court upheld, the Supreme Court upheld the lower court ruling of Judge Ferguson. And denied Plessy's attorney's request for a rehearing. So the committee then appealed to the Supreme Court, which is what this was all about. Two briefs were submitted on Plessy's behalf, meaning against the segregation. One was signed by Albion W. Tourgye, T O U R G E E. And James C. Walker. The other brief was signed by Samuel F. Phillips and his law partner, F. D. McKinney. Oral arguments took place before the Supreme Court on April thirteenth eighteen ninety-six. Tourgye and Phillips appeared in the courtroom to speak on Plessy's behalf. Tourgye built his case upon violation of Plessy's rights under the Thirteenth Amendment, which prohibited slavery, as well as the Fourteenth Amendment. Which states that no state shall make or enforce any law which shall abridge the privileges or immunities of citizens of the United States. Nor shall any state deprive any person of life, liberty, or property without due process of law. Nor deny to any person within its jurisdiction the equal protection of the laws. So, you know, that that amendment established that even though Homer Plessy had African lineage, he was still a citizen. And that he he had been denied equal protection. On the basis of his race. Tourgye argued that the reputation of being a black man. As property, even though slavery was, you know, was officially outlawed. But but the memory endured. And so that the sep- the separate, separate facilities necessarily implied inferiority of African Americans as compared to whites. Which which violated the equal protection. The state legal brief was prepared by an attorney, by the Attorney General of the State, who at the time was Milton Joseph Cunningham. The Supreme Court issued a seven to one decision on May eighteenth eighteen ninety-six against Plessy. Meaning in favor of segregation that upheld the constitutionality of Louisiana's segregated train law. Seven justices. Formed the majority and the opinion was written by Justice Henry Billings Brown. The court first dismissed any claim that that the Louisiana law violated the Thirteenth Amendment. Which in the majority's opinion did no more than ensure that black Americans held the basic level. Of legal equality needed to abolish slavery. Next, the majority opinion considered whether the law violated the Fourteenth Amendment's equal protection clause. The majority opinion stated that although the Fourteenth Amendment was meant to guarantee the legal equality of all races. In the US, it was not intended to prevent social or other types of discrimination. So an excerpt, quote, this is the, from the majority opinion. "The object of the Fourteenth Amendment was undoubtedly to enforce the absolute equality of the two races before the law. But in the nature of things, it could not have been intended to abolish distinctions based upon color. Or to enforce social, as distinguished from political equality. Or a commingling of the two races upon terms unsatisfactory to either." End quote. The majority opinion reasoned that laws requiring racial separation were within Louisiana's police power. Which was, which was part of the the authority of US states. That the police power included the authority, the scope of authority to pass laws on matters of, quote, "health, safety, and morals." End quote. The opinion held that as long as a law that classified and separated people by their race. Was a reasonable and good faith exercise of a state's police power. And was not designed to oppress a particular class. That the law did not violate the equal protection clause. According to the majority opinion, the question in any case that involved a racial segregation law was whether the law was reasonable. And the court gave state legislatures broad discretion to determine what reasonable meant. Plessy's lawyers had argued that segregation laws inherently applied that blacks were inferior. And therefore stigmatized them with a second-class status, and that second-class status, that stigma, violated the equal protection. But the court rejected that argument. In these words, quote, "We consider the underlying fallacy of the plaintiff's argument to consist in the assumption. That the enforcement of separation of the two races stamps the colored race with a badge of inferiority. If this be so, it is not by reason of anything found in the act, but solely because the colored race chooses to put that construction on it." End quote. After the ruling, Plessy's criminal trial went ahead in Judge Ferguson's court in Louisiana on February eleventh eighteen ninety-seven. Plessy changed his plea to guilty of violating the Separate Car Act, and he just, he paid the twenty-five dollar fine. The Citizens Committee, which, you know, organized this test case, then disbanded shortly after, so they're lost in the moment. And for locals, Louisiana, New Orleans people, in two thousand nine, a historic marker was placed at the corner of Press and Royal Streets. Which is, which is, well, the train stop's not there anymore, but that's, that's, that's where it was, where Plessy, you know, where he was arrested for the first time. And in twenty twenty-one. The Louisiana Board of Pardons unanimously approved a posthumous pardon of Plessy, because he had pled guilty, so he was technically convicted. And the governor, John Bell Edwards, granted the pardon on January fifth twenty twenty. As a result of the Plessy decision. For the, for the next, you know, until Brown versus the Board, which is what we're going to talk about next. The Supreme Court continued to uphold the legality of racial separation, the so-called the Jim Crow laws or apartheid laws. Example, the case of Cummings v. Richmond, Georgia, not, not Virginia. Cummings versus Richmond, Virginia County Board of Education in eighteen ninety-nine. And again in Gonglum versus Rice nineteen twenty-seven. Which which applied this, the, this, the permissibility of segregation to Chinese, person of Chinese descent. Okay. So in the, as the twentieth century proceeded. Activists decided to challenge it again. And one, one organization. That fought for racial equality on the national level was the National Association for the Advancement of Colored People. That's the, that's the actual name, the NAACP, was founded in nineteen oh nine. For the first twenty years of its existence, it tried legislatively. To enact laws that would protect African Americans from racist actions such as segregation and also more immediately lynching. Beginning in the nineteen thirties, the NAACP's Legal Defense and Education Fund. You know, I'm not going to say gave up, because they never completely gave up on the legislative angle, but decided to divert, devote their resources. To the, the courts, use the courts to overturn them. In other words, to get the Supreme Court to reverse itself. So from nineteen thirty-five to nineteen thirty-eight, the Legal Defense Fund of the NAACP was headed by a guy named Charles Hamilton Houston. Houston, together with a younger lawyer, who later would, you know, loom large in American history, Thurgood Marshall. Because he later ended up on the Supreme Court ironically, but in this, in the thirties, he was a junior lawyer. Together, Houston and Marshall devised a strategy to attack Jim Crow apartheid laws. By hitting them first in the field of education. Although Marshall played a crucial role in all the cases, he was the head of the, of the NAACP's Legal Defense and Education Fund. So. Thurgood Marshall was, was often the one who actually argued the cases in court. Houston, in nineteen thirty-eight, returned to legal pri- private practice and then Thurgood Marshall became head of the fund. Excuse me. And used it to argue the cases of Sweat versus Painter and McLaurin. Sweat versus Painter and McLaurin versus Oklahoma Board of Regents of Higher Education. And Pearson versus Murray, Maryland nineteen thirty-six. So Thurgood Marshall, so the University of Maryland. Well, Thurgood Marshall had applied to law school, the University of Maryland, and he was rejected. Because of his race. So beginning in nineteen thirty-three, Marshall decided to challenge this practice in the Maryland court system. Before a Baltimore City Court in nineteen thirty-five, Marshall, Thurgood Marshall argued that Donald Gaines Murray. Was just as qualified as white applicants to attend the University of Maryland's School of Law. And that Murray was rejected solely on the base of his race. Furthermore, Thurgood Marshall argued that since the, you know, black law schools, as they were called. Which Murray would otherwise have to attend were, did not have the same resources to have as large a library or to have as many faculty. And so would be, you know, of a lower, were not, were not equal. And therefore, the University of Maryland was violating the principle of separate but equal. Moreover, Marshall argued that the disparities between white and black schools was so great. That the only remedy would be to allow students like Murray to attend the white law school. The Baltimore City Court agreed. sided with him against the University of Maryland, so the university then appealed to the, within the state. In nineteen thirty-six, the Maryland Court of Appeals also ruled in favor of Murray against the University of Maryland. And ordered the law school to admit him. Which they did, two years later, Murray graduated. Nineteen thirty-six, the NAACP's Legal Defense and Education Fund decided to take the case of Lloyd Gaines. Which became, what, so Lloyd Gaines was a graduate of Lincoln University, which was a, a black. which became, what, so Lloyd Gaines was a graduate of Lincoln University, which was a, a black, all-black college. He applied to the University of Missouri Law School, was denied because of his race. The state of Missouri gave Gaines the option of either attending an all-black law school that it would build. Missouri didn't have an all-black law school at the time. Or Missouri would help pay for him to attend a black law school in another state. Gaines rejected both of those options. And he employed the service as a Thurgood Marshall, you know, funded by the NAACP to use this as another test case. So he sued the state in order to attend the University of Missouri's law school. And he would have been the first, the first black person to have done that. In nineteen thirty-eight, his case reached the Supreme Court. And in December that year, the court sided with him against Missouri. A six-member majority stated that since a black law school did not currently exist in the state of Missouri, the equal protection clause required the state to provide within its boundaries a legal education for Gaines. Since the state provided a legal education for white students, it could not send black students like Gaines to another state. Encouraged by this victory, the NAACP continued to legally attack segregation in higher education. In nineteen forty-six, an African-American man named, named Heman Sweat applied to the University of Texas, the law school for whites. Hoping that it would not have to admit him to the white law school if a black school existed elsewhere on the university's campus, Texas set up, it didn't have one, but it set up a black law school to try to get around the reason that Missouri lost in the, in the previous case. So at this point, Sweat employed Thurgood Marshall and the case was, you know, subsidized by the NAACP and sued the University of Texas, arguing that the education that he would receive in the black law school was not of the same academic cali- caliber as the education in the other school because the black school was new, it didn't have resources, didn't have a library, and you absolutely have to have a library to be a lawyer or to, or to, you know, to study, to be a qualified lawyer. So, the case made it up to the Supreme Court in nineteen fifty. The court unanimously agreed with him, once again, sided with him against the University of Texas, citing as its reason the blatant inequalities of the two schools. In other words, the blacks' law school was separate, but it was not equal. Like the Murray case, the course found, the court found the only appropriate remedy was to admit Sweat to the university's white law school. Nineteen forty-nine, the University of Oklahoma admitted George McLaurin, who was an African-American, to its doctoral program. However, so they thought, okay, we're, we're abiding by the Missouri case and the Texas case. However, it required him to sit apart from the rest of his class, which was white. It required him to eat at a separate time and at, at different, different tables from white students, et cetera. So McLaurin stating that these actions were both unusual and resulted in adverse effects on his academic pursuits, he sued. He employed Thurgood Marshall again, once again subsidized by the NAACP Legal Defense Fund to argue the case, eventually went to the Supreme Court. In an opinion delivered on the same day as the decision, the court stated that the university's actions concerning McLaurin were adversely affecting his ability to learn and ordered that they cease immediately. So once again, so now we have three states, you know, well, four, we have Missouri, Texas, Oklahoma. You know, and, and all the courts gradually eroding the Jim Crow, the apartheid in, in education. All right. So all that background leads to, that's all higher education. So now to go to the, the lower, I mean, earlier in terms of age. Brown versus the Board of Education. Argued December ninth nineteen fifty-two, re-argued December eighth nineteen fifty-three, final decision, May seventeenth nineteen fifty-four. The background. In nineteen fifty-one, a class action lawsuit was filed against the Board of Education of the city of Topeka in the state of Kansas. It was filed in the US, the federal district court for the District of Kansas. The plaintiffs were thirteen Topeka, Kansas, parents on behalf of their twenty children. The suit called for the school district to reverse its policy of racial segregation. The Topeka Board of Education operated separate elementary schools for whites and blacks, following a, a Jim Crow law, eighteen seventy-nine Kansas law, which permitted districts to maintain separate elementary schools for blacks and whites. And it turned out that at the time, they had twelve such communities with populations over fifteen thousand. The plaintiffs had been recruited, as again, this is, this is a test case, a planned test case of the Topeka, of the, of a Kansas branch of the NAACP. Notable among the Topeka NAACP leaders were the chairman McKinley Burnett, Charles Scott and Lucinda Todd. The named, the named African-American plaintiff, so Brown versus the Board, so it was named for a guy, Oliver Brown, he was a parent. He was a welder, he worked for the Santa Fe Railroad, and he was also an assistant pastor in his local church. He was convinced to join the lawsuit by a friend of his, Charles Scott. Oliver Brown's daughter, what gave him standing, you know, in the case, Oliver Brown's daughter named Linda Carol Brown was in third grade. She had to walk six blocks to her school bus stop in order to ride to Monroe Elementary, a segregated black school one mile away, while only seven blocks from her house, closer to her house, was the white school, Sumner Elementary. So the NAACP, you know, got these parents. This is coordinated, so the NAACP coordinated this, you know, to deliberately violate, you know, in order to, to, to get a test case. Got each of the parents to attempt to en- enroll their children in the closest, the physically closest neighborhood school, if it's a white school, in the fall of nineteen fifty-one. And following the, the Kansas law of eighteen seventy-nine, they were each refused and redirected to the segregated schools. So the case of Oliver Brown et al. versus the Board of Education of Topeka, Kansas. The district court ruled in favor of the Board of Education. This, this time backing apartheid. So ignoring the previous cases, the most recent cases we covered, which pertain to university education, and instead citing as precedent Plessy, going all the way back to the Supreme Court's Plessy decision, which said, you know, which, which validated segregation, arguing that it was not a legal inequality, it was only social. So, but they appealed and appealed and appealed. So eventually they made it up to the US Supreme Court. And they were, excuse me. It turned out there were five cases. Brown's was only one, but the court consolidated all five of those cases. And Brown's was the first chronologically, so that's why his was the, was the name. But all five of those cases were sponsored by the NAACP. All right. The Kansas case was unique in that there was no contention of gross inferiority of the separate schools. So that had worked with the university cases. But in this case, that they did not allege that the, that the black school system in Kansas was actually inferior in terms of the physical plan, the curriculum or the staff. The district court, the, the lower court had found substantial equality in those factors. But it did observe, you know, that what was, it was undeniable that quote, colored children in many instances are required to travel much greater distances than they would be required to travel could they attend a white school. But that was attenuated, that hardship was attenuated, again, continuing with the initial opinion, noted that the school, quote, "The school district transports colored children to and from school free of charge" and that no such service was provided to white children. End quote. All right. In December of nineteen fifty-two, the US Justice Department filed an amicus brief in the case, which was unusual in its heavy emphasis on foreign policy considerations of the Truman administration. So as we covered earlier, after World War Two, the Cold War began and, and Soviet propaganda, communist propaganda, you know, used the apartheid as practiced in the Southern United States as recruiting, you know, other populations against the United States and, and the, you know, the fear in that the brief was that that the communists could infiltrate the country by using this, you know, dissatisfaction caused by apartheid to recruit internal, you know, subversion. All right. In the spring of nineteen fifty-three, the Supreme Court heard the case, but was unable to decide the issue. And so they said that they, they would rehear the case in, in the, the next term with special attention as to whether the fourteenth amendment's equal protection clause prohibited the operation of separate public schools for whites and blacks. So was it, you know, was, was the segregation as Plessy, you know, stipulated, was there a difference between legal? Was there a difference between legal inequality and social inequality? So Plessy, Plessy ruled that those were two different things, that it was possible for a state to impose social inequality without violating legal equality. So that's what, at the, okay. So this made, the court was divided. So there were justices in support of desegregation and they had to spend time convincing the others. Now, there were others who just thought, you know, that, that outlaw segregation altogether would be overstepping, that that would be judicial activism, that was, as it was called. Others just thought, well, it's a states' rights issue. That, you know, that elementary education is not, is not, is not a power of the federal government, but it's, it's for the states, so they shouldn't involve at all. So notes and drafts of all have survived. And so it enables us to itemize the divisions of opinion. Justices William O. Douglas and Hugo Black, Harold Burton and Sherman Minton were all ready to overturn Plessy, meaning ruling against segregation. Fred Vinson noted that Congress had not adopted desegregation legislation yet. So he thought he didn't want the courts to get ahead of that. Justice Stanley F. Reed noted an incomplete cultural assimilation as well as the states' rights issue. So, you know, and in his notes, he, he viewed segregation as actually working to benefit the African-American community. Justice Tom Clark wrote, quote, "We had let the states, we had led the states on to think segregation was okay and we should let them work it out," end quote, meaning, you know, referring to the Plessy case. Justices Felix Frankfurter and Robert H. Jackson disapproved of segregation personally, but were also opposed to judicial activism. The chief justice was Vinson, and he had been a key stumbling block, but he died in September of nineteen fifty-three. Eisenhower was president, we already talked about him in an earlier video. He appointed, he changed history, Eisenhower changed history by, by filling the position of chief justice with Earl Warren. Okay. And, or this was the first of many cases in the Warren Court that, that completely changed the operation, the public operation of the United States. So who was this guy? Earl Warren served as the fourteenth chief justice of the United States from October fifth nineteen fifty-three to June twenty-third nineteen sixty-nine. He was born in Los Angeles, California. His parents were both immigrants. His father Matthias initially was spelled Varan, but later they just simplified it to Warren. He was a Norwegian immigrant. Whereas Earl Warren's mother, Kristel Stavanger, was a Swedish immigrant. They married in Minneapolis, Minnesota, but then moved to Southern California in eighteen eighty-nine because Matthias found work with the Southern Pacific Railroad. Their first child was a daughter, they named Ethel. The second child was Earl, the future chief justice, and he was not given a middle name. In eighteen ninety-six, when Earl was aged five, the family relocated to Bakersfield, California. Warren graduated from Kern County High School in nineteen oh eight. He had an average academic record. Desiring from the first a legal career, Earl Warren enrolled in the University of California at Berkeley, majoring in political science as, as an undergrad, and that was supposed to lead to law school. This environment at Berkeley exposed Earl Warren to the progressive movement, which we have encountered many times before and then earlier in this playlist. The progressive movement was a post-Civil War secularized version of the social gospel movement, which built on the foundational belief that the proper role of government included intervention, moral management to improve society for the common good or what they regarded as the common good. Anyway, he earned his law degree nineteen fourteen, again, just middling academic performance, but sufficient for admission to the California bar. Earl Warren's first employment as an attorney was in the corporate sector for Associated Oil Company in San Francisco. There, he had a life-changing experience. He saw from the inside the unvarnished, shameless corruption in, in not only the corporation, but the, how the corporation had suborned the government for its own economic advantage. And that, he never got over that. That experience shaped his views for the remainder of his life, and that solidified his collegiate progressive idealism into a professional certainty that government activism was essential for a healthy and just society. When Warren was aged twenty-six, the United States entered the First World War, April nineteen seventeen, which we also covered in an earlier video. Warren volunteered, but he was rejected, he had a hemorrhoid condition. And, but he really wanted to serve, so he sought and endured a painful, in nineteen seventeen, extremely painful surgery to correct the condition. And then he enlisted in the army in August of nineteen seventeen, posted as a private in, in Company I of the Ninety-first Infantry Division, and, and the, the, the three hundred and sixty-third regiment of the Ninety-first Infantry Division. By the end of the war, he rose through the ranks, he was a commissioned officer, second lieutenant. After he stopped serving, you know, in the, uh, regular army, he remained in the Army Reserve until nineteen thirty-four, and he retired with the rank of captain. After the armistice, Earl Warren returned to California. Over the next seven years, Warren devoted himself to public service and he rapidly rose through the ranks. Nineteen eighteen, in Oakland, he got a job as a legislative assistant to a newly elected member of the California State Assembly named Leon Gray, G R A Y. Then Sacramento, same year, nineteen eighteen, Warren was appointed as clerk of the Assembly Judiciary Committee. So he had both at the same time, while, then. Following year nineteen nineteen, deputy city attorney for Oakland. One year later, nineteen twenty, district, deputy district attorney for Alameda County. Following year nineteen twenty-one, he met a twenty-eight-year-old widow named Nina Elizabeth Myers. She had a three-year-old son. They began seeing each other. Nineteen twenty-four, he worked for the Progressive Party. I mean, the, you know, it was a, a third party, attempting to secure the presidential election for Robert LaFollette of Wisconsin. Now that, that failed, but you know, still, it shows that his, his thinking is still along that, along those lines. Following year nineteen twenty-five, Warren became district attorney for Alameda County, a position he held until nineteen thirty-nine. In that position, he earned a reputation as an anti-corruption activist prosecutor, you know, pursuing his, the, the progressive, you know, belief that, that the role of government is to interfere and, you know, and manage public morality. On October fourth nineteen twenty-five, shortly after Warren's appointment as district attorney, they married, Warren married Nina. And by all accounts, it was a happy marriage. They had, let's see, six, no, they, they had five children together, but six total because Warren formally adopted Nina's son James by her previous marriage. Now, while Warren never abandoned his progressive political philosophy, he had ambitions and, you know, that a third party was not, you know, it was obvious that, you know, a third party was not going to do it. So he had So, uh, he had to join one of the two established national parties. He chose the Republican Party. Now, you remember these party ideologies, they follow the pendulum effect too, just like all other human history. At the time, the Republican Party was the exponent of a strong federal government. Whereas the Democratic Party at the time of that generation was the states' rights party. So he joined, became a Republican, which allowed him to, uh, to enter into the national realm. In nineteen thirty-two, he served as county chair for the presidential reelection campaign of Herbert Hoover, a Republican. Now, as we covered previously in this playlist, Hoover lost that election. But Warren had made connections, you know, with, with, with the national. And, uh, and, and that, that led to him becoming state chair of the California Republican Party. Nineteen thirty-five, Warren moved, uh, the family to a seven-bedroom home just outside of Oakland. The Warrens sent their children to Sunday School at the Baptist church, but Warren himself was not a regular churchgoer. In nineteen thirty-eight, Warren was elected as the twentieth Attorney General for the State of California. So he went from district attorney for Alameda County to state attorney general. He served in this position from January, it was sworn in, January third, nineteen thirty-nine, until January fourth, nineteen forty-three. In that, uh, uh, anyway, okay. Uh, as, as AG, a state attorney general, Warren continued implementing his progressive philosophy of government, managed public morality, organizing a centralized enforcement, uh, pursuit of statewide anti-crime campaign. He attacked gambling ships off the coast of Southern California. As a, you know, he found ways, you know, they did it on ships because, you know, to evade the, you know, but it's still, so he thought, he saw progressives saw gambling as immoral. And therefore, you know, the government has to interfere to stop that immorality. Okay, uh, World War Two broke out nineteen thirty-nine. Uh, and foreign policy became more important. Uh, and, you know, we weren't in the war yet, and because of the First World War accomplished nothing for the United States except to get Americans killed, there was a strong isolationist. You know, uh, uh, movement in the United States before Pearl Harbor. But Earl Warren, as a progressive, you see, it's the interventionist, so government has to, has to fix things. That's, he projected that onto the international level. And so he rejected isolationism. Even though that was his, his party, the Republicans at the time were isolationist. And Roosevelt was the interventionist who wanted to, you know, get in the war. So this is a, Warren, he had this kind of divergent view. So, uh, you know, so he sided with his progressive sentiment, you know, is still there, even going against his Republican Party at the time. Because, you know, government has to fix things, so both domestically and internationally. And nineteen forty-one, Pearl Harbor, that, you know, obviously got us into the, into the war. And Earl Warren, uh, organized as AG, uh, states civil, uh, uh, civil defense program. Uh, and in the course of this, uh, he did, he, he engaged in activities which he later repudiated and regretted, but nevertheless did. He used his authority as attorney general uh, to systematically target, and, uh, he was a prime mover in encouraging the, uh, the arrest and imprisonment of, uh, Japanese Americans. Assuming that they, they would, they would foment internal subversion on behalf of Imperial Japan. And, uh, later, uh, he did, you know, he regretted it, but, you know, the damage was done. I mean, the, you know, those, those Japanese Americans who were imprisoned without due process never got those years back. All right. During the war, in April of nineteen forty-two, Warren announced his candidacy for governor of California. He ran against the incumbent, Colbert Olson. Warren presented himself as nonpartisan. And he won. He won, uh, by fifty-seven percent, so a comfortable margin. Yet he maintained good relations, uh, with both the conservative wing of the National Republican Party led by Taft and the moderate wing led by Thomas Dewey. Still a progressive at heart, even though still officially Republican, Governor Warren, you know, it's the, the, uh, modernized the office of government and state government generally, uh, you know, announced in, in, for the sake of efficiency and public planning, but really to make more systematic uh, government management of, you know, of, of, of life. But that's standard progressive strategy. Uh, Governor Earl Warren initiated public works projects similar to those of the New Deal, even though the New Deal was Democrat and he was Republican. Warren supported the Collier-Burnes Act of nineteen forty-seven, that's a state, a state act in California, which raised state taxes on gasoline. And he used the money to fund ma- uh, infrastructure, massive state, uh, highway construction. And not for the last time in US history, a California project shaped federal policy. The Collier-Burnes Act influenced the passage of the Federal Aid Highway Act of nineteen fifty-six during the Eisenhower administration, which is responsible for our interstate system. In the mid nineteen forties, uh, Earl Warren, Governor Warren sought to implement state universal healthcare, meaning state-funded healthcare. Uh, but he was unable to pass the plan due to opposition within the state from medical and business lobbies. In nineteen forty-five, the United Nations Charter to replace the League of Nations was signed in San Francisco while Earl Warren was governor. He played an important role in the United Nations Conference on International Organization, which resulted in the United Nations Charter. Still as governor, he pursued social legislation. That's another progressive thing, so you know, have to fix things. Uh, he built up the state's higher education system based on the University of California with a vast network of, of smaller, uh, branch campuses and, and, and community colleges. After federal courts declared the racial segregation of Mexican schoolchildren to be illegal in the nineteen forty-seven case Mendez versus Westminster, Governor Warren signed the enabling legislation ending segregation also of, uh, of American Indians and those of Asian descent. And this is when, in forty, this is when he publicly acknowledged his regret for his participation in the, in the wrongful imprisonment of Japanese Americans during the war. He also, as governor, he couldn't get the law reversed, but, uh, at the time, California had a, an anti-miscegenation law, meaning racial intermarriage was outlawed. So they, they could not get a state marriage license. And he couldn't get it, that he didn't have enough votes to get it overturned, but he did stop enforcing it. Nineteen fifty-two was a presidential election year, and Eisenhower was running as a Republican. Earl Warren was still officially Republican, so Warren supported him. After victory, Eisenhower offered Earl Warren the position on Secretary of the Interior on the cabinet. Warren declined, but he did agree to serve as Solicitor General. In September of nineteen fifty-three, before Warren's nomination as Solicitor General was announced, the chief justice of the Supreme Court, Fred Vinson, died. Eisenhower then nominated Warren. And Warren received a recess appointment in October nineteen fifty-three, and the Senate confirmed Warren's appointment in March of nineteen fifty-four. Earl Warren was the first Scandinavian-American to be appointed to the Supreme Court, and he was the last appointed to the court in the twentieth century who had previously held elected office. When Earl Warren was appointed, he walked into the Brown case, Brown versus the Board case. All the other justices had been appointed by either Truman or Roosevelt. And most were committed New Deal liberal Democrats. Nonetheless, they disagreed on the role that the courts should play. Felix Frankfurter led a faction that insisted on judicial self-restraint, regardless of their personal opinions, that they should not get ahead of the legislature of the Congress. So that, you know, if, if, if the Congress decided to, to desegregate, well, okay, but that the court should not get ahead of that. Justices Hugo Black and William Douglas led the opposing faction. Uh, by agreeing that the court should defer to Congress in matters of economic policy, but favored a more activist role for the courts in matters of, of social policy relating to individual liberties. Earl Warren's belief, uh, of course, he, you know, is a progressive, that, you know, government has to interfere and fix things. So he was on, on, he was aligned with the Black Douglas faction. And he regarded the Constitution as an embodiment of American values. So a more generalized organic document. So he was not a strict constructionist. And with that in mind, he walks into the Brown versus the Board case. All the justices but one personally rejected segregation. Uh, but the judicial restraint faction questioned whether the Constitution even gave the power, he even gave the court the power to end it. Whereas the activist faction returned to the Fourteenth Amendment stating that the, the equal protection clause of the Fourteenth Amendment did give the necessary authority. So Earl Warren, he's now the chief justice. All right. So that means he convenes the meetings. He can't make them vote in a certain way, but he does convene the meetings and he sets the agenda. And he presented them his arguments. First, he argued that the only reason to sustain racial segregation would be an honest belief in the inferiority of other races. And none of the justices would admit in writing to believing that. Second, uh, Warren argued that Plessy must be overturned in order to maintain the legitimacy of the Supreme Court as a defender of liberty. Third, he argued that Plessy must be reversed by a unanimous opinion. Now, uh, Warren had to spend some time after this speech convincing everyone to sign on to one opinion. Reed was the last one to drop his dissent. And so the final decision in Brown versus the Board was unanimous with Warren drafting, uh, the opinion. And he kept circulating it over and over and overdraft after draft after draft until everyone finally agreed and, and Reed was the last one. Uh, it was read on March, on May seventeenth, nineteen fifty-four publicly, and it decided in favor of Brown and the other plaintiffs, meaning that it, it ruled against apartheid, it ruled against racial segregation in education. So his opinion began by noting that it first tried to determine whether the Fourteenth Amendment was meant to abolish segregation in public education. Because that was, that was another argument against, that the public education is not a federal matter, it's a state matter, so that the Constitution did, that no one even has, that, that the, that the federal courts don't even have standing to rule on that issue. So, uh, and Warren noted that the question was complicated by major social and governmental changes that had taken place since Plessy. That he noted that, you know, at the time of Plessy, there were very few public schools at all in the American South for whites or blacks. That, you know, that, that families of means had private academies, you know, that they would send to or hire tutors, uh, or send them somewhere else, maybe send them, you know, send them to Europe or something, a place to study, but that, that neither white, so there was equality in the sense that neither whites nor blacks really had access to public education in the South. Whereas by that time in the mid nineteen fifties, uh, he, he wrote, quote, "Public education is perhaps the most important function of our local and state governments," end quote. So his opinion framed that, that being the, building that, taking that as an assumption. His opinion, uh, was built on the foundation of, of, of the general question of whether the principle of, now that public education was the norm, can the separate but equal be applied to public education? And he ruled, well, I mean, the others agreed, but he wrote the, that state mandated racial segregation, even if implemented through school systems that were otherwise equal, is inherently unequal because of the psychological impact. So he, he used social, contemporary social sciences as part of his opinion. That, uh, and then another quote from the opinion, quote, "To separate black children from others of similar age and qualifications solely because of their race generates a feeling of inferiority as to their status in the community that may affect their hearts and minds in a way unlikely to ever be undone." End quote. Okay, so, uh, that was it. So this was the Supreme Court reversing Plessy. And as we saw, there were a few other previous cases that are less famous. Uh, because, you know, it was adults, you know, whereas this, this led to the integration. So kids were involved, you know, and, and, and so, and, and so there're going to be some cases which this video is, you know, is getting too long. So we'll, we'll mention a few in the other where, you know, where, where there were attempts to stop children, minor children, uh, from going to school to, in an integrated case. So that's why this became more famous. Yeah, there's those famous images, uh, of the opposition. So these are more famous than the previous university cases that we covered. But as we can see, Brown did not just happen, that the court had already been moving, you know, in, in, you know, in that, in that direction. So anyway, we'll stop here. And, uh, next chronolo-, so this is nineteen fifty-four. So chronologically, even though we normally don't think of it this early, American involvement in, in Vietnam began in the same year, nineteen fifty-four. So, uh, the next video will do that. We'll just, as one video, even though it went on and on until the seventies, I'll, I'll just do it all in one summary video. You know, for, for, so it's easier. You have all the information together. So for now, um, thank you for your attention. This session is adjourned.